We're gonna call this Board of Education meeting to order at 7:04. Welcome, everybody. Lisa's joining us in place of our other Lisa today, so I'll pass it over to Lisa to do roll call. Thank you, Lisa. Agenda, are there, is there anything, I don't have any additions or deletions. Anyone see any issues with the agenda? If not, we can approve the agenda. For motion to approve in that case? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zabrowski, seconded by Mr. Schuman. Thanks very much. Under correspondence, we did have one correspondence sent to us, and I'll let Dr. Macri describe the correspondence and next steps, if that's okay?
So Lisa Hicks did forward this to everyone. We did get a letter from a student, Keegan, just explaining that he's noticed the fences around the high school fields where they play routinely are being sprayed with pesticides, and he is concerned about the pesticides that we use, and he is urging the Board of Education to think about a transition to an organic or natural weeding-killing program. So, we actually do have a policy on this, and we, I'm gonna just quickly invite Claudio Bazano, because he probably could do a much quicker job to fill you in on what's happening currently, and what it would take to switch, and even if we could, would that be in the best interest?
Good evening. We do have a herbicide and pesticide policy in the district. The state allows us to use herbicides on the fields, only in high schools. We're not allowed to use them at elementary school, any grade below, ninth grade. So, we do not use any of that, any of the other fields. We don't use pesticides. If we, we have a program in place that, if you're interested to know when and if we use pesticides, you sign up, and we would send out an email with the information, and that is available to anyone, in case they're concerned about their children on the fields after a pesticide application or herbicide application. We were looking into a more organic system, but I know for a fact that it's probably somewhere around three to four times as expensive as regular, and it's not as effective. So, we're gonna do some research to see if we could replace the herbicides that we're using with something more organic, and what the cost would be, what the cost implications, and that'll be up to the board or someone else to decide whether we want to change to that direction. But as we have information, we'll share with everyone. Obviously, this is winter season, we're not doing any herbicides or pesticides application at this time.
Claudio, just remind me again, the town puts it down for us, we pay for it?
The town-
Or do we share the cost of the-
No, we pay for it.
And they-
But they're, they run the process. They have the contact with the chemical company that applies the application, and they arrange for it, and then bill is forwarded to us. Because this covers, the town uses our fields also, not just our students. And again, this is only at the high school. We do not do any of this at the elementary levels.
Thank you, Mr. Bazano, that's much appreciated, and maybe we can circle back, have the student's principal just circle back and share that information, if he's not listening tonight, just so he can get-
No problem.
Thank you.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Welcome.
Okay. We have no other correspondence, so we will move on to public comments. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, we're gonna move on to some celebrations. This is always so much fun. We are celebrating our faculty and staff, and I think Dr. McLean's gonna introduce our folks that we're celebrating tonight. Let's have Amy and Julie, and Erica, and Krista, and Sarah come on up.
So I did write down comments today, because I could probably talk about them all night, but I wanted to make sure I got in what I wanted to say, and that I was concise. Tonight, I have the distinct honor of recognizing our instructional leadership team. We call it the ILT. The team whose work is a linchpin for the instructional success of Cromwell Public Schools. This instructional leadership team works in the back room, but makes all the magic happen. We had an enormous amount of success this year district-wide, and it's the work of this team that was integral to make that happen. I'm truly blessed to work with educators of this caliber, and I want to bring the work that they do to light, because they have a very difficult job. Whenever the ILT is around, that means that change is in the air. And it takes a special kind of leader to make people feel safe and comfortable in making improvements to their practice. First, I would like to introduce our curriculum supervisors, Julie Shepherd and Amy Arnissa. You know them. They are my right and left hand. They oversee the reading and math curriculum and instruction, and are in classrooms providing support, feedback, and collaboration on a daily basis. They plan professional development, reflect on the needs of their department, and support teachers in continuous improvement. We've had great gains in both reading and math, and if it weren't for these two ladies, we wouldn't be where we are today. In fact, I got an email from Denise Savarisi this week, an consultant at the CSTE, regretting that she was not able to do walkthroughs with us last week, because her husband just had surgery. She was made aware of our work, because the woman that we have partnered with, Dr. Tara Lobin of TNTP, which is a national educational nonprofit that provides research and policy support to states nationwide, has told her that we are one of the districts that is a model for the rollout of the reading curriculum. We've spent hours analyzing, diagnosing, problem-solving, and preparing interventions. They have sought out curriculum solutions in both reading and math, and have developed teams to pilot and provide input in the process. The result of them, of that, has been an outstanding curriculum rollout with very visible gains. These women are strong leaders. They understand teaching and teachers, especially the ways in which adults learn best. They advocate strongly for resources, especially Julie. She's my most expensive co- Yeah, she did. And they have demonstrated results. They never flinch when I show them the new district improvement plan every year, and are ready and eager to implement new strategies to improve student outcomes. It is my honor to work with them every day. The truth is that the work of instructional leadership team is never done. Until 100% of our students are not only successful academically, but also well-rounded people, ready to enter their world, our work is not done. Now, please join me in recognizing our instructional coaches.
Krista Scalo, raise your hand. Sarah Galati. Erica Ballas, and Graham Jerry, who was not able to be here tonight. These professionals are key to high-quality, individualized professional growth in our district. Oftentimes, people that don't work in school do not understand the importance of instructional coaches. These are people that are in classrooms, working with teachers, providing resources, guidance, and individualized support. We are a district that believes deeply in continuous improvement, and we have teachers of all experience levels. To grow, teachers need professional development that begins where they are, and pushes them forward, and that means something different for everyone.
Connecticut has recently revised its teacher evaluation plan with a heavy emphasis on teacher-driven professional development. Our instructional coaches are the key to this strategy. They are the mechanism through which we meet this mandate by implementing coaching cycles. The coaches work side-by-side with teachers to provide the intensive, individualized professional development required by the state plan. They support teachers with planning and resource acquisition, providing high-quality resources to use in the classroom, thereby saving our educators valuable time and boosting efficacy. The recent ES report specifically highlighted the significance of our growth culture, noting that leaders encourage teachers to take risks in the classroom without fear of failure. Our coaches are essential to making this environment possible. The success of our ILT is built on trust. Coaches are intentionally nonevalutive. They have built a relationship with our staff that allows teachers to feel safe in taking risks in the classroom, and openly discussing their professional challenge, which is a prerequisite for true substantive professional growth. Outside of the classroom, our coaches ensure our dedicated time in PLCs and data times, data team is highly impacted by joining PLC meetings for data analysis and support in curriculum development. Leading data teams focus on rigorous and relevant instructional practices and planning for targeted small-group instruction. Teachers, helping teachers create pre- and post-assessments to track student progress, and overseeing our intervention program, and interventionists, ensuring that those working with our students who need the most support are receiving high-quality interventions. They foster a growth mindset among teachers by modeling lessons in classrooms, and taking small groups of students to demonstrate effective strategies, and providing the push and support that encourages teachers to take risk in the classroom. These are the teachers that Amy, Julie, and I train to provide expertise. Their job is to work with teachers and use the skills they have to improve teaching and learning. The work of the ILT was not only identified by us as a strength, but I would argue is one of the most vital components of our success as a district. Julie, Amy, Krista, Sarah, Erica, and Graham, thank you for your dedication, your experience, and your commitment to teachers and students of Cromwell Public Schools. We are profoundly grateful for the vital role you play.
We have a great leader. Thank you all. Last meeting we met, and we got to look at some of the phenomenal test scores, and just the tremendous, you said visible gains, but they were clearly visible gains, and we are so appreciative to all of you for all the efforts that you put into helping our teachers be the best teachers that they can be, so that our students can achieve the successes they're achieving.
And behind closed doors, we talk often about how we have a mighty feat in front of us this year to outperform ourselves from last year.
Well, you set the bar high, so now it's higher.
That's what we always talk about. I'm like, okay, well- Now, we've gotta keep it up. So, yeah, but these people really, they're the, they're the quiet people that work behind the scenes. They do, they do so much work, and they're not in the forefront, they're not in front of the students, you know, all the time, and, but they are really doing all of the work from, you know, it starts at the district level, and then it trickles down, and it's these people that are really getting into classrooms and working side-by-side with teachers. So I am so incredibly proud of the team that we have.
Thank you. Anybody have any comments? Mrs. Russ?
I know that they don't always work in front of students, but I know some of them have worked directly with students in the past, and it's been out of, you know, not necessarily what's in the curriculum or anything else, they've gone out of their way and above and beyond. I know in particular, Erica Ballas has helped out one of my kids. So, I, I'm sorry. Sarah Galati has helped, and Erica Ballas have both helped out my kids in their different areas, so, and one, and when Sarah helped out, just so you know, my kid had a day off today, and they sat and read all day long. Because they were highly encouraged with the work that you did. And the other one that Erica kind of advocated for is now excelling greatly in college, in that area, in the math. So, thank you to both of you for everything that you have done, because I do know that you do sometimes work directly with students. So, those, not just those in need, but those that are excelling. So, thank you very much.
Any other comments? No. Dr. Macri? Of course.
Of course, this is my jealous moment, because I used to be Carrie. And it is just the most exciting work that we do in a district, and it's not without, I mean, obviously, we don't, we have Graham, which we all know is a male, but it's so important for Jillian and for Summer to see that you have some really incredibly brilliant women up there, leaders, and the way they got there was to grow each other. We all started in the classroom, we saw something really special in each other. One of us saw something special in another one, and then someone saw something special in another one, and we built upon each other's skills, and that's why these incredibly brilliant women are making such a difference for all of you and your education. So, I think it's really important for women leaders to see each other in those roles, and to build each other up, and for that, I am incredibly proud and incredibly grateful for all the work that all of you do. And I couldn't ask for a better sidekick than I have. Dr. McLean.
We concur, Dr. McLean. We appreciate all that you do in your leadership.
And these guys make it easy and fun.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
We appreciate you. All right, so the other exciting part of our agenda is that we get to celebrate our students, and we are all thrilled to be able to welcome and recognize Andrew Hudak, I hope I'm saying that right, Andrew, our WISKSID governor. Mrs. Berry, sorry, Mrs. Berry.
That's okay. See? Already a leader. I didn't even need to invite him up. He knew to come right up here and be ready. Proud of you. As mentioned, Mrs. Binnington unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, so I am honored to present our kid governor on her behalf. Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Macri, Assistant Superintendent McLean, and members of the Cromwell community. It is my pleasure to introduce an exceptional fifth-grade student from Woodside Intermediate School, our 2025-2026 school kid governor, Andrew Hudak. There's more. Earlier this fall, our fifth graders participated in the Kid Governor Program, a statewide civics initiative that empowers students to identify an issue they care about, and propose a platform to improve their community. Among a strong field of thoughtful, passionate candidates, Andrew stood out, not only for the clarity of his ideas, but for the heart behind them. Andrew's platform centers on a simple but powerful vision, incorporating a weekly 45-minute life skills class in every Cromwell school. His proposal imagines a class where students learn essential hands-on skills, such as cooking, sewing, basic home care, and other practical tasks that support independence and confidence. To bring this idea to life, Andrew suggested partnering with parents, caregivers, and community members who could volunteer their time and expertise. He also proposed fundraising within the community to support materials and supplies, demonstrating not just creativity, but a genuine understanding of what shared responsibility and community involvement looks like. Andrew is the kind of student who inspires others. At school, he is a standout alto saxophone player, and his teachers describe him as creative, quick-witted, and a true team player. They consistently highlight his kindness, his willingness to help others, his strong work ethic, and the responsibility he brings to everything he does. Andrew strives to include everyone, and he approaches each challenge with maturity beyond his years. In short, Andrew is exactly the kind of young leader we hope to nurture in Cromwell. One who sees a need, imagines a solution, and brings people together to make it happen. This evening, I am proud to share with you Andrew's official kid governor video submission. It is 2 minutes 8 seconds, and it beautifully captures both his platform and his passion. At this time, I'd welcome you to view the Kid Governor campaign video.
I'm Andrew, and I have a question for you. Do you think that if you left your parents' house right now, you could survive on your own? I personally think I could not. I don't know how to cook my own meals. I don't know how to earn money and manage it, except for the stuff I want. And I don't know how to find and get a job. But is school the way it is now going to teach us how to do those? It's not part of the classes we do every day. You may have had something like a Friday fun day, that teachers may have tried to teach you something, but that wasn't always necessary skills. Sometimes it is just fun stuff. Where can we learn how to really live day to day? We do know our town offers a staying-home alone safety class, a babysitter safety, CPR class. If the town believes we need these classes, and our parents think we need these classes, why don't we learn these things at school? My name is Andrew, and I want to be the next kid governor, because I want to bring life skills classes.
I think we can do this by starting to use what we already have from the town recreational programs, using the town community members to teach the essential life skills classes for a 45-minute class period. Fundraise to get money for permanent life skills classes available in every school, and have life skills classes added to the curriculum in every school in Connecticut.
My family teaches parents a finger drill.
We can make life skills more hard work by getting the town and family to teach a class. During that, you will fundraise for a permanent life skills class in every school. This step will be a lot of hard work, but you will not be alone. And, and you will finally, after months and months, you will have a permanent life skills class that will be teaching you many things like cooking, sewing, and many more. The class will happen once a week for a 45-minute class period. Vote for me, so I can make this important change to our school. Life skills are important, and we need to start them at school. A vote for me is a vote for our future. So, vote for me, Andrew.
Andrew, do you want to share anything with us? No, thank you. All right, you already did a beautiful job in your video. Well done, Andrew. Thank, thank you. Thank you, Andrew, for raising this very important issue and for representing us as our Cromwell governor this year. Give us a lot to think about, because those are very, very important lessons that every young adult, every student should learn, and I think most parents would concur, that we would love for our kids to learn how to cook, and how to clean, and how to do some of those really important life skills. I know we do personal finance, but I don't think we go much further than that. So, thank you for raising that and for sharing it with all of us. Anybody else have any other comments, questions? Mr. Zabrowski?
Andrew, at the risk of putting you on the spot here, I have to know. You did such a great job speaking, especially in the first part of that video. Did you have cue cards, or did you memorize it? How did you do that? Sorry to put you on the spot, buddy.
I had a laptop with my speech on it, and what I put on there, someone was close enough, and the font was big enough, where I could read it right off of it. Sometimes it was difficult, and I had to improvise, and as you saw in there, it had a cut area where like we would pause, we'd go over it, and we'd be like, okay, we have this part, we have to get to another part. And like when my part was very long, in one of them, I put my hands behind my back, which was a signal to the person who was holding my laptop to go down, so I could read the rest of it. And in part of it, I was improvising other parts. It was just, I was reading right off it. Sometimes the glare would, from the sun would mess it up. So, that's how I got it.
You're a very natural speaker. It's great to see.
Thank you.
Good for you.
Of all of us.
Seriously, you could teach people how to speak in skills. That was impressive.
Congratulations, Andrew.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Andrew. Okay. We have reports of the liaisons to Town Council, Board of Finance, Building Committee. I think, I can't seem to get into that reference A link. I don't know if anybody else can, but mine is not, looks like it's not working. Okay, so we do have a report from the Building Committee, but I think, Slam, are you, are you representative to the Building Committee?
I certainly will be. Unfortunately, I wasn't there last week, because I was on business travel.
It's okay. We have a written report.
Yeah, and I did read the meeting minutes. The report well represents what the, what the committee went through.
Okay, so everybody has that as reference A, and we'll just figure out why that link isn't working. I know later in the agenda, I need to formally appoint liaisons for Town Council, Board of Finance, and the Building Committee, but in the interim, last Town Council meeting, anybody attend the last Town Council meeting that wants to report? Okay, how about Board of Finance? I know Board of Finance had a very short meeting.
I can fill you in.
Thank you, Mrs. Russ.
Board of Finance had about a, maybe five-minute meeting. They are looking to elect a board chair, and they are split 3-3, so they have 30 days to make a decision, and if it does not come through, so they're not expecting anything to change, then it will go to Town Council to do the deciding vote on who will become the Board of Finance Chair. So, they're kind of at a holding period right now.
Thank you. Okay, so we will wait until next meeting, and we'll have official liaisons, and we'll have more to report. Onto our student representatives, so Summer and Jillian. I don't know which one of you is gonna go first, but welcome, and we'll turn it to you.
Okay, okay, it's on. I can't see the light. The Student Council Holiday Food Drive was an enormous success. As usual, Mrs. Pavlik's class is won by a landslide. Me and Summer went out and counted. It was like 20 to 100 items. It was a lot. So, special thanks to Ms. So special thanks to Ms. Pavlik. It took like a team of like 10 people and so many trips to get it all out to the car. It was really nice to see that many people showing support for the community. The Student Council, again, is now hosting a toy drive to benefit Connecticut Children's Medical Center, thanks to Jack Mandigo and the Mandigo family for their continued partnership in this endeavor. CMS student Gabby Klow-Jay Talk, I'm sorry, I don't know how to say it. In conjunction with St. Vincent de Paul, has organized a clothing drive at CMS to benefit the needy around the world. Students are asked to bring in any items that would help warm up those in need during these cold months, including coats, hats, scarves, gloves, mittens, boots, and sweatshirts. On December 12th, Cromwell Public Schools will host a PJ Day to raise awareness for childhood cancer. Students are encouraged to donate $1 each on that day. Robotics Club is meeting three days a week with a larger crew than usual. This year, there are two separate teams consisting of the new members and the members from last year, each of which are building their own robots. So this year, we have two. Both of which are going pretty good so far. CMS Drama Club rehearsals for the production of Alice in Wonderland have begun. Ms. Sales and Ms. Westherzog are excited to invite the stage crew to join rehearsals in January. Stage management team has been there every rehearsal so far, taking attendance and collecting forms. I've been there. And I have a really good team this year. Things are going well. We're excited. We're working on lines. Yeah, everything's set. Oh, shoot, yeah, word language. Uh-oh. Pouncing on Summer here. World Language Club met on December 4th to learn about St. Nicholas Day, which I assume is similar to Christmas in some way. And which is also celebrated on December 5th and 6th. The club will meet again to study the traditional foods of the many holidays celebrated at this time of year.
The CMS Band and Winter Concert will be held on Wednesday, December 10th, selections including Sleigh Ride and the Chipmunk Song. As well as on December 12th, CMS students will have the opportunity to play in a combined winter concert with Cromwell High School students. CMS Chorus will perform an evening concert on January 14th, as well as Jasmine Jazz Band is practicing for their performance later in February. Sea Club, oh my goodness, is hoping to recruit additional members for the coming winter seasons. The Riding Club plans to meet on Tuesday, December 9th, and students are excited to share their creative stories. For sports, boys' basketballs, after falling to Berlin and Rocky Hill in their first two games of the season, Calvin Forrest, Jake Barton, and the CMS Boys Basketball Team hope to rebound under the leadership of Coach Budzik. For the girls, Brianna Romajali, Kayla Morrissey, and the rest of Dr. Bosworth's basketball team will also be looking for their first win of the season when they face off against Ram on Thursday.
Thank you. Well done, Jillian and Summer, as always. Thank you. Any comments, questions for our representatives? Mrs. Ross.
I'm not sure if you know the answer, Summer, but are the concerts that are being held, the one tomorrow night, and well, the combined one with Cromwell High School, I believe, is here. But are they doing that concert tomorrow night in the new auditorium?
I believe so.
That's exciting. All right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I'll just make an observation because I absolutely loved Jillian in your presentation. You talked about a toy drive for CCMC, a clothing drive, and donations to support cancer research. So it just really impressed me that we are teaching our students so much about citizenship, about community engagement, about philanthropy, and really about caring for and giving to others that are less fortunate. So thank you for sharing that with us. Yes, please. You are recognized.
Thank you. And the warm clothing drive, that is something Gabby I know has been doing for years. She is not prompted to do this. She is doing this all on her own time. She's organizing this herself. Like she's the leader of this. So just a special shout out because this is a lot, and I'm pretty sure she's been doing it since at least 6th grade.
So thank you for telling us that, and perhaps we can think about recognizing those students that have really taken the lead in some of those efforts at a future meeting because that's pretty incredible on top of very busy class schedules that they are really putting their hearts and their time and their effort into helping others. So thank you for telling us about that. Any other thoughts, comments, questions? Okay, thank you so much. Town collaboration updates, I don't think we have any. So I think we can move on to Superintendent's Updates, Dr. Macri.
I will keep it brief because most of our time right now is being spent on putting together the budget. We obviously are looking on ways to improve our presentation, and we're also looking at adding lines and maybe changing things so that it makes more sense to the public. And Mr. Butwell will explain a little bit more when he provides his presentation. So we've been meeting with departments, schools, re-meeting to look at some lines, and we'll continue to do that right until we present on January 20. You should get your books the week, or a little bit earlier than the week before that meeting so that you can go through it all. Also, you just heard Jillian and Summer, everyone is preparing for their winter concerts and their shows. And again, January 14th, I just want to always remind you, and you'll get a letter as well, is when we're going to dedicate the auditorium to Mike Amilary. So I would love for everyone to be there. It's going to be a very special evening. And we have been kidnapping our administrators for long professional development times so that they are very much aware of what's going on through the ILT so that it's funneling into the school administrators, and they know what to look for when they're walking into classrooms with Dr. McLean and all the supervisors. Oh, sorry, Instructional Leadership Team, sorry. And PLC is Professional Learning Community. So we'll get there, sorry.
Just so you know, some of us spent all day at Cabe, and we got a whole long list of acronyms that we are supposed to remember, but without our cheat sheets in front of us, it's helpful to know.
33 years. I don't even know if we know how to speak. Some of them, we probably can't even tell you what they stand for. We just know what they mean. But yes, that's what we've been doing. Other things I just sent to you on a weekly update, but also no, there are a lot of things I can't share with you in weekly updates because by the nature, my job is confidential for the most part, but I try to share all the positive and happy things with you that are happening.
Thank you, Dr. Macri. Okay, so onto the exciting portion. Where's Mr. Butwell? We're very excited about our budget updates and budget process presentation, and I think Dr. Macri built this up now so that we're really excited about how you're going to demystify this process for all of us. So thank you. So I feel like I should do a drum roll for you.
Thank you, Dr. Macri. I'll just follow the agenda, which has the budget update first. Not really much to report on this month's report. We're moving along smoothly. Sort of our usual, we're watching our usual areas, which tend to go over budget. In this case, pupil services and transportation. But in general, looking very solid throughout at this point in the year. It's okay. I was just pausing for you to reflect on the projection. Any questions on this month's projection? Okay, if not, I'll go on to the budget process overview. I think you'll find the first hour very exciting. I've boiled it down to 10 slides, so I'm very happy. And the first one is the title page. So this is just our budget timeline, which you saw earlier this year. And we're in the midst of it right now. But basically, as Dr. Macri already mentioned, we're busy meeting with each of the buildings and the departments within the district to understand their budgeting needs for the upcoming year, reviewing expenses, and you know, trying to make our best predictions and projections for the upcoming year. What are the revenue sources for our school's budget? Most of it comes from the local, the town of Cromwell. We do, of course, receive state and federal aid and a few smaller revenues that come into the district, such as tuitions. If you have questions along the way, please feel free to stop me. Yes.
Thank you. Under the other district revenues, if we receive donations or say grants from private institutions, private companies, is there a process to do that for the board?
As far as donations go, those usually, you know, Dr. Macri is informed of those donations. We'll usually notify the board when that happens. Usually, the donations are earmarked for a specific need or area. And so we'll, you know, we'll make sure that that money is put into the correct accounts. It is, of course, we're audited each year, which not everybody knows, but every school district every year is audited. And so, you know, we have to keep very careful detailed notes about where things go and where money came from and what we ended up doing with it.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Process. You could keep them coming.
Just a reminder that the budget for the Cromwell Public Schools pays for everything that we need to provide education to our students. And they sort of fall into big buckets of certified and non-certified salaries and benefits, providing student services, instructional and of course, non-instructional supplies, transportation, and of course, maintaining our facilities.
Mr. Butwell, I think Ms. Matty has a question. The only way that folks that are watching can hear you is if your mic's on.
Being able to project. When will the teachers come up for, or have they recently come up for their new contract? And is it normally a three-year contract?
I got it. It's actually on our agenda to approve later today. So we'll look at the details of that contract in executive session and approve that contract, and we can go through all that this evening.
But will it be 26 to 29? Is it a three-year contract?
Yes, three years.
Thank you.
And usually, always actually, one member of the Board of Ed sits on every team that does negotiations for each of the bargaining units, so we have input and are involved in the process.
Okay, of course, there's many components to the budget, but probably the biggest are salaries and benefits. Those are a key driver. They're determined by collective bargaining agreements. And so, you know, it's really non-negotiable in terms of what we must pay and what benefits we must offer. Of course, those benefits and costs increase annually, and they make up about 75% of our budget salaries and benefits. For other reasons, our special education cost is another driver. That more so because it's challenging to project the needs for tuition and services and transportation, you know, a year ahead of time. We have a changing student population that, who require services. So students who may not be with us right now could appear in our district next year and require services. And also, we have inconsistent reimbursement from the state. And so that percentage that we get reimbursed at is sort of a moving target at times. We talked a lot about that last year, depending on what month it was. I was giving you a different percentage on what we were anticipating with that. This is how the budget is organized. First, by location or category. So on the left, you'll see sort of all the different areas and departments that the budget is broken into, from physical places like ECS and Woodside to more mysterious things such as Capital Outlay. And then, within each of those areas, they produce a budget in a different category known as an object. So salaries or benefits or insurance or travel or tuition, depending on whatever they need to run that area or that program. When we create the budget, first, we sort of, we deconstruct it, and we have each area or location build their own budget, and then we put it back together. So here's an example of a summary of one location, which is from the Central Office Budget. You'll see at this page, this page appears at the beginning of each. Sorry, a page like this appears at the beginning of each budget session for each location or department. It will show the actual amounts spent during the previous year, which is that left-hand column that says 23, this is from last year's budget also. So 23-24 actual. And then it will show the adopted budget for the current year, and then the proposed amount for the upcoming year, as well as changes in amounts and corresponding percentages. So you can see that for this Central Office Budget, we have objects in 330, which are legal, other purchase services such as legal services, 540 advertising and printing, 580 travel, other purchase services, other supplies, 739 non-instructional equipment, and 810, the category of dues and fees, which I highlighted because we're going to go take a quick, deeper look at that. So if you drilled down to the 810, you would see all the dues and fees that the Central Office is anticipating paying for the upcoming year. And you can see that's compared to last year's prices as well, and you know, any possible changes. Once we, once each area completes their budget, we put it all back together and create the district budget. So this is the district budget summary, which is sort of like the front page of our Cromwell Public Schools budget. And you can see all those objects on the left there. And then, again, these are now total amounts across the district that we'll be spending in each of those areas. And then, of course, the difference in last year's spending and, or last year's budget and the upcoming budget in the corresponding percentages. And we look forward to working with all of you to approve the budget for the upcoming 26-27 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Butwell.
My pleasure.
This was very helpful. Helpful to me, I hope helpful to others. Any questions, comments, Ms. Matty?
After having spent.
You've got to turn on your mic. Oh, it is on. Oh, good.
After having spent from 8 o'clock AM to 5 PM with Cabe, and it was incredible, a little overwhelming, I have to say, over and over again, each speaker said, if you need any help with any part of the budget, with any, I mean, I learned more about special education and the costs. I really wish, not, I mean, I was always pro-budget, but I really wish I had known this years ago so I could tell my neighbors and friends that there's so little control over that special education budget, and it can really just crush what you were planning on having and spending. But over and over again, every speaker said, we are here for you. We are here to support you. If you need information, now you probably know all this. But I thought that was kind of cool, that they wanted us to know that they're right behind Boards of Education to help them with whatever budget, and they knew, they talked a lot about budget as well.
That's fantastic. Yeah, there certainly is a lot of information within a budget, and I'm glad that you have their support, and you certainly have ours as well if you have any questions as we go through the process.
I thought it was great.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, well, we look forward to what you present to us next month.
Thank you. I look forward to it as well.
Thank you in advance for all the work you're going to put into it, too. Then we'll really do a drum roll. Or maybe, maybe not?
No, you approve it.
Oh, okay. When it goes to Board of Finance. All right. Okay, so we are on to our ESS update, which is Reference D in your packet. Thank you. Ashley, you're going to do some introductions.
Hi. Unfortunately, Ms. Oliari couldn't be here tonight, so I am here to introduce our wonderful ESS team.
I'm Erin Chanel, the Regional Clinical Director for the Programs in Cromwell District and I'll let my team introduce themselves.
Hi, everyone. I'm Joanne Molycom, the Regional Vice President of New England Area Region, oversee the clinical and administrative programming. Nice to see you.
Hi, my name is Amanda Ferroa. I'm the Regional Operations Assistant.
Thank you. So I know that I have presented before, but I will go over just a little bit of what ESS is again on the next slide. So this is going to be our partnership update on data with the first marking period. So ESS is a clinical program. We provide tier three, what we consider tier three ESS clinical services here in Cromwell. So that's programming that's going to support students with significant mental health or behavioral needs. They might have issues in social, academic, or their family functioning. The students that are the most appropriate for these tier three programs are going to have depression, severe anxiety, suicidal, self-harm, may have already been hospitalized or have symptoms that might lead to psychiatric hospitalization, aggressive disruptive behavior, school avoidance, as well as, you know, high risk sexual behaviors or substance use. It's not a drop-in service, I will say that. So the next slide that we're going to talk about is just kind of going to go over the summary for the marking period one update. There has been a high utilization of services, so we've had 670 total therapeutic services delivered in marking period one. That was to 27 total students and that was averaging three and a half services per student per week. Overall, there was a positive impact that there's 58% of academically struggling students were showing significant improvement, attendance. We had 60% of students with chronic absenteeism now showing improvement. And then the students with disciplines, there was 50% with discipline history that were showing improvement as well. So there was an estimated 155 PRN sessions, which are crisis or as-needed intervention So the next slide just kind of goes over our snapshot of service delivery and engagement. So you'll see that it does say that there's a total of 1,145 total services delivered. So we did say 670. Those are what we consider specifically therapeutic and clinical, but that doesn't include collateral contacts or other meetings, or when our clinicians are participating in PPTs and different things like that. So there'll be many different services there. So as you can see, collateral contacts, individual sessions, anything that we consider that's non-clinical, but they're still engaged in some sort of case management for the student, failing engagements, groups, structured lunches, and maybe perhaps like intake assessments as well. So my favorite part with the bar graphs, and they can be very confusing, is kind of like if you notice on the left, I'm sorry, on the right-hand side, for example, with the attendance, you can see like the baseline, we always compare students' baseline data to their marking periods. So you can see that there is an average decrease in the attendance, so we went from 8.64 unexcused attendances to 7.45. This is the average between all of the students though. So disciplines, sometimes when we're working with behavioral students, they may have a slight increase because we're holding them accountable. So with that one, we're not seeing a significant change at this marking period, but doesn't mean that they're not utilizing interventions to continue to work with those students. And then our GPA performance, you can see that the average is 1.53 at baseline and now is a 2.19.
And that's it. I don't know if there's any questions that you have for me and the team? Yes, Mrs. Lamb.
How are students identified? Is it self-identified, teacher-recommended, family-recommended? How do you get into the program?
Well, so our team, each school, we have an administrative team that meets weekly, so there has to be a referral process that's identified at each school. So usually those, there's, the SRB team is talking about those students. Those are filtered through administration and it's confirmed in our administration meetings that they're appropriate for the program.
Got it. Thank you. Any other questions? Nope. We've got a couple. Okay, Mrs. Russ and then Mr. Zabrowski.
Were you first? Okay. I know, I don't like, I don't love the setup, but initially, one of the, I think it was like the second to last slide, there was a chart that showed the interaction with students, I believe.
The service delivery engagement?
Yes. And it's high in August and then it dropped weight, it dropped a lot into September and then it kind of crept back up for October, November.
So August is going to be lower because there's only like four days there, because school started on August 26th. So it was a little bit lower there and then it shoots up on.
No, it was higher in August.
Is that for intakes? Intake line?
Is it, you mean she means weekly services per student? Is that what she means?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Is that because it's the start of the school year?
And we do our brief clinical assessments.
Okay. Is there a reason why it dips so much in September and then it kind of went back up for October, November?
Usually we do see that, like when we have our students kind of come back in, they're very excited to come back, especially if they've had clinical services like just beforehand. Sometimes we're doing preparatory work with our, the clinicians are doing that with the students. We'll usually see that they do quite well and then the academic pressures and other things will mount.
Mrs. Zabrowski?
So I'm going to ask a question just for clarification for folks who maybe don't work directly in schools and are maybe unfamiliar with some of the lingo, but when we're talking about tier three services, can you give a, just a very brief explanation about tier one versus tier two versus tier three, even if you just use examples?
Yes, go for it.
Step in for this one. So tier one, for anyone that is unaware, that is something that we, everything that all students can benefit from. So tier one is for all students regardless of ability or disability.
And that's, that's primarily led by the classroom teacher?
Yes.
Okay.
Classroom teacher, general education setting. Then we go up in the tiers depending on need for perhaps SEL, math or reading, so we'll increase the intensity and duration of the services that are provided. We might get reading support, math support, counseling, lunch bunch, things like that. Tier three is our highest level of support and ESS is our highest level of support at both the middle school and the high school, with the highest level of support of clinical care that is supported to students and also includes wraparound services. So any supports that students receive outside of school, our clinicians are supporting families and supporting their outside providers to make sure that the care is well-rounded and everyone's on the same page to do what's best for the kids that are in the program.
Awesome. Thank you. And if they, if tier three supports are not working for a student, that's when we start to look to.
That's when we, yeah, we follow that continuum of services that, you know, is in.
I'm just, I'm just trying, I mean, you know that I'm familiar with this. I do this too. I'm just trying to make sure.
We want to go from the least restrictive, which would be tier one, and then as we move through, yes. So if tier three, if a student is unresponsive in tier three or not getting what they need, then we would look at additional supports that they might need. It's not where they need to go, but what they need. So it might be a more therapeutic setting, it might be a smaller setting, a higher adult to student ratio. So kind of what that student needs to be successful for what their needs are.
Thank you.
Natalie, because I know Jessica wants more. So we have student assistance, I know, it's so hard and you could call me, we could talk all about it. I love, I love it. So, or just call Ash, we all love talking about it. But we have students, student assistance teams delivering MTAS, multi-tiered systems of approach in every school. And so what happens at those team meetings is that's when you determine with this particular team and the team changes slightly depending on what student you're talking about, depending on what resources you need, and then you make decisions together as to what you need to do next for that student. Okay. Sorry, is that, yeah, okay, you can call us anytime. Okay. Oh, Ms. Matty?
Does the tier three student, is, I'm not familiar with this, is the amount of support that that person might get, is that determined by hours per week? Is it, or is it more complicated than that and therefore, because some of these kids may be getting clinical support elsewhere?
So that's a really good question and it's kind of a wide variety of an answer because we have students that are in tier three for academics, so that might mean that they are seen in a small group for reading, five times a week for 30 minutes. We might have students that are tier three for social-emotional, so that might mean, you know, with ESS, that's like a half an hour a week, one-on-one, and then half an hour a week in a group setting. So it all depends on the need of the student and what they're, what they're requiring in terms of support, be it academic or behavioral.
And would those students be coming out of class?
Yes. So we, so our goal is, we always want our students to receive the tier one instruction, the general education curriculum first, that's the most important that they're accessing. So then we kind of go from there to make sure that they are not missing kind of that direct tier one instruction through many lessons that are through their teachers. So to the best extent possible, unless unfortunately, there's a crisis situation that we need to intervene sooner than later, but that is always at the forefront when we're making those decisions for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you all. No other questions? We appreciate you and we appreciate all that you do for our students.
Thank you. We're very fortunate to have ESS. Very thankful. They've done great work with our students and we're just.
We do have great clinicians.
Wonderful clinicians and they're doing great work with students and families.
Absolutely. Grateful for the partnership.
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to move us on because I am conscious that we have a training after this meeting, so I want to make sure to be careful of everybody's time. So we've got our Table of Organization, which is under New Business B, that's informational, so hopefully everybody has seen that. Action Item, so I get the job of appointing committee members for our various committees, so thank you everybody for letting me know what you are most interested in and what you feel most, best suited for. I'll be happy to get this to this Lisa or our other Lisa, but I will just share informationally for our policy committee, Lori Cantwell is going to remain Chair of the Policy Committee. We are lucky Lori wanted to do that because she's phenomenal at it. And the committee will include myself, Mrs. Russ, Mrs. Matty and Ms. Lamb. And then our Facilities and Technology Committee is going to be chaired by Mrs. Franklin. Thank you, Mrs. Franklin. And will include Mr. Schuman, Mr. Zabrowski and Mr. Heisman. We also get to appoint a liaison to various boards and councils. So Mrs. Russ has agreed to be our Board of Finance Liaison. Thank you so much, Mrs. Russ. Mr. Zabrowski has agreed to be our Town Council Liaison. Thank you so much, Mr. Zabrowski. And Mrs. Lamb has agreed to be our CMS Building Committee Liaison. And I think I, oh, I've got all of them except that we also did have the Building and Facilities Townwide Committee passed through referendum in November, last month, and we have an appointment, so I get to say ex officio to that committee and then we have an appointment, which is officially made by the Town Council. However, we get to make a recommendation, so we'll be recommending Mr. Heisman to serve as our rep to that committee and then I'll also sit in on that committee. And I think I've got them all, but if not, I may have to come back next meeting if I've forgotten anything. But just great appreciation to all of you who not only serve as Board of Education reps, but also share your expertise and your time and your talent on various committees here and throughout the town. So thank, thank you so much. I know that everybody wears a lot of hats and I appreciate that. And I will write this up for Lisa so that you don't have to. Lisa, okay, thank you. We have another action item, it's letter D, Overview of Current Co-op Programs, Procedures and District Cost. And I am going to turn that to Dr. Macery. It's reference F in your packets.
So this evening we have Mr. Cuckel and Mr. Lemay. We do participate in co-op programs and athletics and we have not reviewed how we do this and how much we participate financially with resources, how much we get, how much we give in a very long time. In fact, Mr. Cuckel used to be in Josh's position and he had a memo to the Board of Education in 2015 and we were laughing. A parent did ask me if we could consider, because right now, parents, if we have students that are participating in hockey, for example, which is an expensive sport, if we would be, if we would consider, if the board would consider paying some of that, whatever we call it, the pay-to-play, I guess. Yes, pay-to-play, it's pay-to-play, it's, it is, that's what it is. But, so we want you to have the whole history and then you can make a decision and we got research out from other districts and I'll hand it over to Andrew and Josh and they'll fill you in.
I'll just start off with a quick historical piece and then I'll turn it over to Josh can kind of run through the numbers for you currently. So yeah, it was about 10 years ago, Cromwell High School, we did not have co-ops and hockey was the first one that we ventured into. And when I proposed to the board at that time, all the families, and we had about five at the time, so we had more numbers, but all the families were aware that to enter into this co-op, it was Newington High School, they would be the lead, there would be a $1,500 fee per family. That would cover ice time, that would cover essentially everything that they had to do to run the program and that Cromwell High School would not contribute anything to that cost. Families in the hockey community, from my understanding, is, you know, the club leagues and teams they play in are very expensive, so the $1,500 was almost like a discount in some ways. But again, that was the understanding at the time, is that they would pay their way for that program. We wouldn't provide transportation, they would provide their own transportation to practice and Newington would then take care of game transportation. Then about a year later, it came before the board again and this time it was for us to be the host school. So with co-ops, you either are the non-host or you are the host school. For football, we ended up being the host school to Portland, they came over to us. Portland took care of transportation and they also paid $750 per player, which covers for us, the operation of the system. Helmets that have to get reconditioned every year, the shoulder pads, the other equipment in that way, and just for part of the program, for us to sustain the program. So two very different scenarios, again, one being the host school, one not being the host school. And those were the two co-ops that we essentially had for some time until recently. We've added some more, quite a few more, just due to trying to expand opportunities for students. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Lemay now, who can give you more of the detail behind the finances that we currently sit at with our families.
Thank you, Mr. Cuckel. So first off, I just, I just want to say that speaking specifically to hockey and really all of our co-op families, anybody that has a child that plays sports knows the sacrifice of it. And, and all these co-op families, they're really good representatives of our community, they're passionate about their sports and from the co-op hosts, I hear really, really good things. So specific to hockey, we have two males and two females. We have three freshmen and one senior. The senior is a female hockey player. The females play at Hand of Madison, which is a cost of $1,834 per skater and the males play at Newington Co-op, which is $1,450 per skater. When Dr. Macery received the email, I soon after had a Shoreline Conference meeting with all of the athletic directors, so that's what you'll see in the reference. And if you exclude us, four of the schools in the Shoreline Conference pay for the pay-to-play fee for hockey. Six do not and we are the seventh. So I just wanted everybody to have that information. When I talked about it with the other Shoreline Athletic Directors, if the families did pay, it was also something that was kind of already on their radar, something that, that they're thinking about discussing in a forum like this. Again, just a quick overview like Mr. Cuckel was talking about, we also have wrestlers that go to Portland. Portland does not charge us, so there, there's no fee for that. Obviously, it's a much different sport than hockey is with the ice time. And then again, we host football and then later tonight, next agenda item, I'll be proposing to see if we could host Cog and Chog as in boys lacrosse. So, do you guys have any questions? Yeah.
Yeah. Mrs. Russ has a question. Okay. I have a quick question. Under your document where it says families or school, does that mean the school is paying all of the cost?
Every penny.
So there's no, there's no split relationships that you've seen where school pays a portion and the families pay a portion?
There hasn't been a split, I haven't seen that, but just in talking to the families and I think there were a lot of questions this year because three of the four athletes are freshmen, I think they, I think any assistance, if we were able to do it, would be appreciated. So I don't think a split would be a terrible idea if it's something the board was in favor of and it's something that made sense for us. But currently, no. It's, it's one or the other and the four schools pay the entire pay-to-play fee. Two of those schools actually provide transportation as well.
Just for full disclosure, I was one of those families that paid for hockey co-op and it was a great opportunity to do the hockey co-op and it was less money than we paid when we were. And it was a great opportunity to do the hockey co-op and it was less money than we paid when we were playing hockey elsewhere. Um, but it still is significant. It's a costly sport.
For sure. And, and I, I think another thing is I think, um, on the Newington co-op specifically, uh, I think several of tho, they're in the CCC, so we just stayed right in the shoreline. That's who we, we meet with constantly, um, that we work with. But I, I think several of those teams, uh, their schools pay the fee. So you could be skating next to somebody who paid nothing while you paid the, the full freight.
But I, we, we appreciate that. I think Mrs. Russ had a comment, so.
And then one more thing, the, um, the girls' price has traditionally been higher because they have lower roster numbers. It's a sport that they're trying to grow in Connecticut. Um, last year that really peaked, it was $2,500 per skater. Uh, and it was, it was really tough because the, the team was down to 11 skaters. You really want like probably between 16 and 19 minimum. Um, so they had a tough season. It was a winless season. And because there was less skaters to break up the, the cost by, they, they had a, a much higher bill than the boys.
Oh, thank you. That's really helpful. I'm gonna go to Mrs. Russ first and then anybody else that has questions, comments.
Um, well, talking about the sports where we haven't charged anything, and I'm assuming for Coggin Chog, um, I mean, if, if we, if, if it were the reverse and we were sending our lacrosse students down to Coggin Chog, boys lacrosse players provide all of their own equipment and everything else. And so usually it, it wouldn't be an additional charge to play. But most schools charge, if the school itself doesn't cover it, it's very common for some schools throughout the state to charge a fee to play hockey because it is very costly. Um, even if they don't provide the pads and everything, they still provide helmets for them and those, those are significant. Um, the ice time, the refs alone cost a significant amount of money. Um, I think it's just the cost of playing the sport and it is a lot cheaper than playing any, at a club level. Um, so I, and the other one, um, football is the same way. We provide helmets, padding, and everything else. So it makes sense to me that Portland would charge, you know, have a charge for, we'd charge them for each player that comes over here because we are reconditioning extra helmets. I mean, there was a point in time where we had a significant number of players coming from Portland. And we still had a good number come in, in Cromwell. We, we were a big, strong, solid team, which was great. However, we're providing a lot of service and a lot of equipment that goes along with it, which is extremely costly because they do have to be reconditioned every year. Whereas the other sports, it's not necessarily the same thing. So, um, I don't know, just for our board members, I'm not necessarily in favor of funding this for the students. Um, not that I don't want them to continue into a co-op. I'm glad that we have one, but I just think that if you compare the cost to what it is at a club level, this is significantly lower. And some kids still make the choice that I'm gonna play a club no matter what. I'm not gonna play at my high school team, even if it is a co-op. So I am, um, just in, not in favor of supporting this funding.
Okay, I'm gonna pass it to Dr. Macary.
Just when you make a decision, um, I, there are things that I just want to make sure that you understand. So if we did not charge, would, if we paid the bill, would more students participate? We talked about this too. So then would the cost increase? But then we also talked about if more students participated, it would actually bring the cost down because we'd have more students participating. So we don't know, right?
If you, I could, not necessarily, not, not if the team numbers are down. So we could, we can contribute a lot of, we can contribute a lot of student athletes, but if the overall team numbers are low, the price will still be high.
That's right. So depending on all the other districts, that's right. Our cost would still be high, right? So that's something to just consider. Also, um, how would we budget? And I, in speaking with other superintendents, this is, there's a couple of things, of course, what we just talked about and what, what Catherine just said. But then how do we budget? Because you don't really know, right? We're, we're, we can budget for who we have, but if it increases to five, and then some towns pay for transportation, which is something we definitely could not afford because it is just so expensive, um, to pay for the transportation piece. So those are things I just want you to think about. But at the end of the day, um, I'm bringing this to you now because we are budgeting. So I want to make sure that you have a decision to make and that we are budgeting, um, to the best of our ability when we do our budget.
I just want to make sure I have the action item correct. So we are asking if anybody wants to support a proposal to cover the cost of our students to play, but could be multiple, or either saying the full cost of co-op hockey for our students that want to participate, a portion of the cost. So I guess that's what I will be asking is, does anyone want to make a motion in either of those directions? Oh, you can ask a question because I have not, no one's made a motion yet, so go for it.
All right, um, so if, are there other extracurricular activities where we are funding students to go outside of the district? So athletics, I know is, is one area. Are there other activities? Art, music, theater? This is the only area?
Off the top of my head, yes. There might be some outlier thing that I'm missing right now, but.
Yeah, so, so the, the basis for my question is, how do I think through, is this equitable for students in the district? So if, if all of a sudden we had enough players to field the girls' hockey team, would we stand up a girls' hockey team and then we're paying for all of these costs? So like, how, how do I, how do I think about bringing equity into the conversation? I, I know budget absolutely is extremely important, but I'm just curious from a, how do I think about this?
No, I think that's a really good point. And the other is, once we start, if we start with hockey, does that open the door to many other possible areas? If we want to be equitable, then do we pay for participation in our programs or participation in other external programs beyond sports? So that, that's, that was the question that I was grappling with as well.
Okay.
Okay, so I don't see any motion on the table. So in, I'll give one last request. Does anyone want to make a motion to support our paying a portion of the cost of co-op hockey? If not, we will move on. Okay. Thank you very much for sharing. We appreciate the information and, um, appreciate all the research you put into that.
Thank you. I think I'm the next agenda item as well with Coggin Chog.
Keep going. You're on a roll, Mr. Lemay.
All right. So, um, we have a motion on the table for Cromwell High School Boys Lacrosse to be the co-op host and take on Coggin Chog as our partner on our boys lacrosse team. Um, currently, it's kind of a situation where it would help make the team safer. It would help the program survive. Um, just some background, um, last year we had about 14 or 15 players on Cromwell Boys Lacrosse, depending on the game. You need 10 players on the field at a time. Um, and what that did is we had to start several freshmen. You put a freshman up, you know, against an 18-year-old senior, you have a 14-year-old going against an 18-year-old. It's not the greatest situation. Um, additionally, uh, it's harder to substitute. It's harder to, you know, give somebody a rest, give somebody a break when they need it. Uh, it, it's a very, very physical sport. Um, so it's something that would be, um, very mutually beneficial. It would help potentially save the program. Uh, we could host it right here, so we wouldn't have to send any of our players out. Um, and it, it looks to be like a, a really, really good situation. Um, the information is, is, um, in the agenda. Um, but hoping to get that approved and I'm here to answer any questions you might have. Uh, I think we mentioned it earlier, but, um, on lacrosse, we have to provide them with shoulder pads and a helmet and, uh, obviously the shorts and a jersey, which get reconditioned. Um, sure, players may have their own gear, um, but we can't plan on that legally. We have to make sure we outfit them, uh, with proper equipment. Um, so what Coggin Chog agreed to was a $375 cost per player. And we would use that to help obviously outfit them with the equipment. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Zabrowski.
So, all right, we would be, if I'm reading this right and what, and what you said, we're looking at a per-player fee of $375 from Cog, coming from Coggin Chog. What are the costs that we as a district would incur in this?
So we try to, there wouldn't be much. I, we try to set it up so the $375 covers it. Um, right now we have enough uniforms. Um, we may have to buy an extra helmet or so. Um, but we, we just have that fee to potentially plan. The reports we're getting is they're gonna, to send us, they believe, between two, two to four players, most likely. Um, they've surveyed and, and stuff. Um, but I, I feel like we just have to plan and have that amount set, um, to make sure we have the, have all the equipment that's required by CIAC ready for them. Um, so I don't see an out-of-pocket cost, but what I do see is us taking that money, using it for the reconditioning costs, and being prepared if this thing grew a little bit in several years down the road.
Mrs. Russ.
Thank you. So, um, I've coached and had kids play lacrosse for, still playing in college, by the way. Um, the cost of a helmet alone is 300 something dollars. Most athletes prefer, if they've been playing for a while, to use their own. So it's kind of like a mixed bag of, then you add on the, the elbow pads, the shoulder pads. They, they have to wear gloves. It's required, the goalie gear, everything else. So, um, it seems like a fair enough cost that would probably keep us covered. Because like I said, most athletes, if they've been playing for years, have it, but there are a lot of kids that pick up lacrosse while they're in high school. So to me, it, it's not like we'd have to fund or, or outfit an entire team necessarily. It's just a few here and there. Understanding a lot of the game of lacrosse, um, for boys lacrosse in particular, I do think it is, it does get dangerous when we don't have enough players because there are positions that come in and out and in and out. Um, and you don't have those and there's even different sticks that are used. If you don't have enough players, you can't really do that. And so you're playing at a huge disadvantage. So, um, adding another two to four players to a roster would be a huge, potentially a huge impact just on our, our squad alone. So, um, yeah, I, just to give a little background to people, and I am, I am all for this one.
Okay, so, oh, Mr. Schuman, I'm sorry.
Is this just varsity or is there, is there lacrosse, JV lacrosse, freshman lacrosse, or is it, we're just talking varsity?
So we, obviously, as it was last year, we only could field just the varsity team. We could, we could barely do that. Um, if this thing grew, a JV team would be outstanding. And then, um, kind of to, to bring it full circle, it's also very difficult to, to practice with, without enough players. Um, but currently the goal is to support the varsity team, so we have enough players. Um, but potentially if it grew, we certainly could have a JV team. Um, just over half the Shoreline Conference does have full JV teams, probably a little bit more. I don't know of the numbers in front of me. Um, but that is something we, we could support. Um, and a lot of times they do those JV games right after the varsity games, just to get the kids that, that experience.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lemay. Is there a motion then to, I, I don't see anybody else with any comments. So is there a motion for us to approve Cromwell hosting? Thank you, Mrs. Russ. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Lamb. Uh, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. That is great news for the lacrosse players. Thank you, Mr. Lemay. Appreciate you bringing that to us. Okay, next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes and motions for our November 11th meeting. You all have that in your packet. So I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes as distributed. Motion, thank you, Mrs. Russ. Second, thank you, Ms. Zabrowski. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Excellent, that passes. You also have in your packet, I'm going fast because I know that we're running behind. Uh, we have our human resources personnel update. That is informational as well as the principals' reports. Informational, yes, okay. Next in our agenda is our policies. So there were several policies listed for second read. I'm gonna do my best effort to channel Lori Cantwell and remember what is in all of these policies, but you do have them linked in your packet. The second read and possible approval for the prohibition of sex discrimination, including sex-based harassment, um, is the, the changes are purely to identify the correct contact folks that are required by policy to be identified. So that has been updated in your versions. And it is simply replacing a prior version with different contacts in it. So I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve that policy as presented. Thank you, Mr. Schuman. Do you have a question?
I have a question.
Okay, um, motion, and we'll do a second and then we'll have discussion. Is there a second for that? Thank you, Mrs. Russ, and now we can do discussion.
Okay, so I wasn't sure the last time we had this, uh, had our meeting where the right point was to ask, um, if we needed to make updates. So I have a couple of suggestions that are not material to the content, just more simplify, more inclusive language. So is this the place to do it or should I recommend it our next policy meeting?
Yep, sorry, we're just discussing process. If we change anything at this point, it would have to go back to policy and then come back here, which is fine. We can do that. Um, I think this isn't an urgent one that we need to do tonight. Carrie, just remind me, Dr. McLean, or I'll lose my mind. I'm so like, you're here and I'm looking, I, please, I sat there when I walked in the door. Um, so, Carrie, can we hold off on this?
This one is just a change based on language and legislation, so it's really not, um, it's mandated policy.
It's mandated, but if we hold off on it, it's not gonna.
I mean.
The next one is gonna kill us.
Always law trumps policy, right? So we have an outdated policy now, but law would always trump that anyway. So if you wanted to send this back to the policy committee for recommendations, you could do that.
I think the issue is a bigger issue about, am I right, inclusive language overall? So I think that's probably a discussion we should have at the policy committee level.
Oh, we certainly could have that.
So that we can look at holistically how we reference individuals in our policies, if that makes sense. And I would recommend for, in the meantime, that we try to get these approved, but then we look at all of them and look at our language collectively. So is, is that okay?
Yeah, I can, I can support that, get behind that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Be a great idea because B would be really hard.
Yes, this, some of these we have to move because we are repealing. Okay, um, and many times, just for, um, information, a lot of these policies are updated regularly because there's been legal changes that require us to update them. So that's.
Sometimes the language is so minor, but we have to be in alignment.
Correct. Okay, so there is a motion and a second, so I will ask for a vote. So all those in favor of approving this policy, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that one passes. Um, I think we are along the same lines under B, the prevention of bullying and intervention policy. Um, this is being, the policy is, is being replaced by our school climate policy. We did talk about this in policy committee pretty extensively. Um, the other informational piece is that most of our policies come directly from our law firm, from Shipman. So they've been vetted and they're used across a whole lot of different districts. So I will ask for a motion to repeal the bullying and prevention and intervention policy and replace it with the school climate policy as presented. I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Thank you, Mrs. Franklin. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Schuman. All in favor? Okay, any, um, anybody opposed? Abstaining? Okay, that one passes. Uh, next is the family medical leave, series 400, reference P, and that is a, that is a second read as well. So we are looking for a motion to approve. No, we are not looking for a motion to approve. That's, yes, yes, okay. Is there a motion to approve policy as presented? Thank you, Mrs. Russ. Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Lamb. Um, all in favor? Okay, I can tell, I can see you all that you're not abstaining. Uh, last one, use of school facilities. That is reference Q. It is replacing the prior version. Is there a motion to approve? Thank you, Mrs. Russ. Thank you, Mr. Schuman. All in favor? Opposed, abstentions? Excellent, okay, we got those done. Lori will be so happy. Um, okay, there is no policy committee report tonight. We did cancel our meeting this, this, um, evening as we would not have had enough participation. Uh, but now we've got new members, so we're good. Facilities and Technology Committee, there is reference R in your packet. You've got that report. Mrs. Franklin, is there anything else you want to add there? No, okay, great. Um, we have topics for future agendas and possible action to approve topics. So that is listed in your, um, agenda. I have two that I would like to suggest being added as of our cave meeting today. We had really interesting conversation about AI and lots of discussion about curriculum, about policy, about technology. It kind of fits across all these different groups that we work in. So I would love for us to have a conversation about how we teach, um, good digital citizenship. I'm trying to think. I'm trying to think of all the language that I learned today. Did you? Okay, I would love for us to talk about it here.
We have a district, um, AI committee that's been working. We, we started last year and that we're continuing our work this year. Um, we're waiting on policy from Shipman, but we are working on guidelines. Um, just a quick general overview and we can talk about this more. Um, right now, we're really encouraging teachers to use AI in order to help support what they're doing. And we're having, some teachers are, are using AI interacting with students, but we are really seriously vetting those programs to make sure that they are in alignment with student privacy laws.
I would, I would love to have a more, I don't know if anybody, I sat in on that session and it was fascinating and I think it, and I, Ms. Franklin and I were talking about this too. Wherever you think we can fit it in?
After budget.
After budget would be fine. Sure, April okay with everybody? And then the other topic that, um, came up today and Dr. McCray and I have been talking about this is just a discussion for us to have together about our district's goals, strategic direction. We have a district improvement plan, we have a mission statement, we have a vision statement. And it strikes me that we're going, doing all of this budget discussion and the budget is really the most significant policy, uh, piece of policy that we're issuing and sets our priorities. And so I would love for us to just have some reflection here as a board as to where are we? Are we making sure that we're staying focused on what's important to the district and putting the resources in the right place? And we, we should all be very involved in what our mission and our vision is and tie everything to that. So would love, I don't know where we can fit that in because it's a probably a more extensive conversation. It's a big conversation and it would be, so basically when we.
We won't hit this budget.
No, that's what I, and, and when we build our budget, it's all built around that, about, around that, just so you know. But it's important, I think, for the board to know that too and to have some input. Um, I would say we could review all of that quickly with you before January twentieth, but that's going to be a long meeting, but it would give you a, a good idea of where we are and, and what everything is. Or I could just.
March? March we've got ESS, but we just did ESS.
We just did ESS and it wouldn't be a bad thing to take that off and then, uh, Dr. McLean and I could really go over.
I'm happy to do it then. Um, the other thing that I could suggest and we could, we can do it both if you want to. The best time to do that is in the beginning of the school year because we review all of our, like our, our district leadership team will meet, will get input, then we develop our, our new strategies. Um, and then we develop a district plan and then from that plan, the schools develop their plan. And from there, we develop our budget. So that's kind of a process. The most logical place would be in the beginning of the school year. I can certainly do like a, this is what ours is for this year and then in September represent again for what, um, because that is the most logical place to do it is, is in the beginning of the, the school year.
And we used to have a board rep, which was Lori, um, that participated on the district leadership team. If a board rep wants to, if we can find someone that would be willing to participate.
That would be awesome.
Then that person reports would, you used to report out what we did, just like we do with the other committees. Um, I know you all work, it's during the day, um, but that would probably be really helpful. So do you want us to wait and, do you want us to do a quick review or do you want us to wait until?
I love the idea of a quick review just so that we all know where we are. And then if you wanted to do something more extensive and I will certainly put out a request to see if anybody wants to participate. Maybe you could tell me when the district leadership team meets and what that looks like so that.
Yep.
People know what they're committing to.
All right, so we'll do a quick review of mission, vision, uh, goals.
Appreciate that.
Yep, in art, in March and we'll hold off on ESS update.
Excellent, okay. Anyone else have any other topics for the agendas?
Okay. Um, we'll move on to comments, updates, announcements from board members. And I, who wants, I don't want to make our new people start. Well, it's okay, Ms. Lamb, do you want to start?
I, I can start, yeah, no, no problem. Um, uh, uh, we've talked today, a few of us did attend the cave new board member training. Uh, thank you for that experience, so I have a lot to learn. I knew I had a lot to learn, but now I know I have even more to learn. Now I know what I don't know. Um, but, uh, just a, a thank you, it was great. It was humbling, it was practical, um, so information that I can use immediately. So, um, really grateful that I was able to attend that. That's it.
I just have two quick things. One, um, I'm glad to see that we're doing work with AI and I just want to make sure that if we're allowing teachers to use AI and the work that they're doing, that we spend a good amount of time in teaching our students, especially as they progress through and throughout the high school, that they also can use AI as study aids and tools. Because even if you take an AP class, the college board, first thing they tell you for some of them is, go onto ChatGPT and ask it this question. So we need to appropriately teach our students how to use it in an effective manner and not just say, oh, the teachers get to use it, but you don't. That's, I've seen that happening across districts. So I just want to make sure that we're, we're, we're careful on how we do this and that we do work with students to show them the right way to do it. And I understand the concern about having our students go on to outside sources. So I, I do get that. Um, and then the second thing is, is I'm glad that we have our new board members and we've all been aside committees. Um, I, now that we're more of a somewhat evenly split board, I was hoping to see some of a mix of Republicans and Democrats, um, policy and facilities. And unfortunately, that did not happen. So I'm wondering if some people would be willing to maybe switch or change so that we can try to get, I mean, you, you are in charge of assigning, so even if they don't want it, too bad. There was a point in time where we had to serve on a committee, whether we wanted that committee or not. So I'm just disappointed that there's not a single Democrat on the facilities committee. And I'm the only representative on the policy committee for the Republicans. So, um, I know that's not how we've always operated our board, but we should have better representation. So maybe some of you want to reconsider where you're sitting. Um, and that is it, thank you.
Okay, if anybody wants to take Mrs. Russ up on her suggestion, I'll be glad to talk with you about that. Um, and I will sit in on the facilities committee so that there is some, oh, Ms. Maddie, are you going to say yes to that?
No, I'm going to make a comment.
Okay.
To what Mrs. Russ was saying. You know, from, from the very beginning, so correct me if I'm wrong here, although I have a feeling this is probably one of those opinion things. I really didn't see the Board of Education as being a group where, um, clearly, you know, I like the idea that there are more Democrats than there were, um, that we've increased that. But I never saw this as a committee that would be mostly concerned about Republican or Democrats. Um, I chose the policy committee because it's something I would have an area of expertise in. As far as the building committee, no one would want me there because I would be totally useless. Um, but again, you know, and, and I don't know if this is a, you know, a presumptuous thing to say or, um, I certainly don't mean to offend anyone, but, um, I never saw the Board of Education as being, geez, is she Democrat or is she Republican? That this is something we all do for our students. Now I realize in terms of, um, you know, uh, that the, the little boy who wrote the letter about, was it, was this the letter Enzo that you were alluding to? Um, I thought I read a letter about, from a twelve-year-old boy about the fields.
Yes, that's what we already talked about.
That's what we had talked about earlier, okay. Um, because I went through that very quickly. Um, it seems to me, it really doesn't matter where we stand financially on these things. This is something that this boy is concerned about. I was, I was thinking in terms of the field that had to be, uh, fixed. The one that we were talking about, should the Board of Finance pay for it? Should the Board of Education pay for it? Should we split it? Um, so just tell me, am I wrong about this? I, I would have never even thought to look to see who was on each committee. Um, but I mean, if it's.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Mrs. Russ, I, no, I'm gonna let Mrs. Russ respond to that, but then I want to get us back to our, um, updates so that we can get to the next couple of days.
This is, um, this is who the town voted for. So for Republican side and Democratic side, so we should show equal representation. Yes, we're here representing the school board, but to have an open side from both ends. We, we have been, in general, we operate pretty efficiently and, and you can't always tell who's Republican or who's a Democrat until more recently. So we do want to make sure we have better representation for what our town has voted us on for. So we are a mixed board, but our committees are not mixed. So I do think that we should have better representation on them.
I'm going to look at our bylaws to just see if folks can be on two committees because we may have some folks that wouldn't be, wouldn't mind showing up a little bit early every time we meet. So I will check on that and then I will try to do some arm twisting to see if folks want to represent or want to support and share their expertise on two committees because some of you around this table would really be excellent on both of them. Um, and I'm going to move us on to, uh, so that I can do my quick updates. I wanted to give a special shout out for all the teachers that take students on field trips. My son gets to go on a field trip this week. He is so very, very excited. So I will thank Mr. Borja for taking students to, uh, the Portland Boatyard to learn about engineering. And just the experiential learning is phenomenal. And I know that teachers do this way above and beyond their regular work and, um, certainly don't get anything extra for it. Um, and I just am so grateful that they, that they do that. And so just a shout out to every teacher that, um, does field trips and, and does that a little bit extra for their students to give them some real life experiences. So if our administrators could pass that on to everyone that you know that steps up and does that, I would greatly appreciate it. So that's mine.
I just wanted to congratulate the Cromwell High School football team. Didn't end the way they wanted to, but they had a great year nonetheless.
Am I missed?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I, I'd have to reiterate what Jessica said. Going to cave today, and I know that that was something that had to come out of the budget, that you paid for that, for us to go. Um, but it was wonderful and everything that was done was very well done. And the cool thing for me was I got to see a colleague from, um, that I haven't seen since two thousand and twelve, whom I taught with at Cogentchak and she's no longer there. And it was just wonderful talking to the people, um, at my table who are almost all from Waterbury and to learn about quorums, even in situations like this, the, the law behind quorums and how we have to be careful when we're, we're assembled, that if we're talking about our specific Board of Education, um, that the quorum could come back to sort of bite us in the butt if we don't watch what we say. But it was wonderful and I learned a lot. I'm overwhelmed, I'll go over my notes at a later time. So thank you.
Thank you. It's a perfect lead into our future, uh, evening presentation about all of the legal aspects of being a member of the Board of Education. Um, okay, on our agenda, we are, we have an executive session scheduled for the purpose of discussion, um, with the Cromwell Board of Ed, but I think I need a motion for us to go into an executive session. Oh, and I'm inviting in Dr. McCray and just, and Michelle and Dr. McLean. This is, no, no, that's, um, we're doing the, um, the contract. No, Jess, no, you could, she's here. She could stay if you want her to. It won't hurt, okay, we're paying her. Mrs. Demora, Dr. McLean. Jessica, do you mind staying? Let's, I said, we can invite her, we're paying her. I'm sorry, and the motion was Mr. Zabrowski, Mrs. Russ and all in favor? All right, we're going into executive session.